It's seven o'clock, so we're gonna start the July first regular meeting on Simsbury Zoning Commission. And first item is a review of attendance. And I see our two alternates are absent today, as well as Shannon. But the other, how many of us are there?
We got five.
The other five of us are here, so that's one more than we really need. But anyways, so we're ready to go then. No need to appoint alternates over here anyway. Minutes of the meeting from June seventeenth. I hope everybody's had a chance to take a look at them although I thought they were pretty good the way they were. Let me open the floor for comments, suggestions, corrections.
I think there's one correction needed on line twenty-six. I think the vote was six-zero, not seven-zero.
We have seven-zero votes here.
I was gonna say something like that myself, because normally we try to hold the voting to seven, to six as a maximum.
That's a good catch, Tony.
Okay. Other than that, any other comments? Corrections? Then. Josh, I'm checking you off as present tonight. So, back to the minutes of June seventeenth. Does somebody wanna make a motion to accept the minutes as they were submitted with the correction on line twenty-six?
So moved.
You have a second. So Diane was the motion, and Tony was the second. Any further discussion? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Just for the record, I'm gonna point Josh to fill the position of Shannon, who's not here tonight. So you're in business from this point on, Josh, okay? Okay, moving right along here. Under new commission business, we have an application number twenty-four eighteen from Curtis Looney and the co-applicant, his wife, for a site plan approval for an accessory dwelling unit at their home at Ten Cedar Glen. Do you have anything you wanna say?
We could have a quick slide. No, we were just gonna, just frame it quickly. It's a fairly straightforward application. Ten Cedar Glen is the address. Mr. and Mrs. Looney are here this evening. It is a site plan application for an attached accessory dwelling unit. The square footage of the accessory dwelling is a thousand fifty-four. It falls, it falls within our guidelines for up to six hundred or thirty percent of the gross floor area. The gross floor area of the property, of the structure is like thirty-five hundred square feet, so it falls below that. But staff finds that it meets the zoning regulations. I would defer to the Loonies. This is their third stop on the land use tour. They have been to inland wetlands, and they have been to the zoning board of appeals for a minor setback variance. So this is their third stop, and we welcome them.
How'd you like to step up to the microphone and add a few thoughts on what's in front of us? Let me also ask you to speak to another. I noticed when, when reading through this, there was reference to a medical or somebody with physical limitations might be living in the ADU.
Yeah, my mother-in-law.
Oh, okay.
I think last night she had colitis, and she was, she was sick, and so that's why she probably came up. But, yeah, so she lives on K Circle, and she's a four-bedroom house. She's ready to move out. She's all by herself, so we'll put this place on the side of our house to make it easier for her to get in. She is older. She's kinda old, so she needs, she needs a help. She needs us to help her. So it should be much easier, although she lives in Motulifus, it just would be easier.
Yeah, we essentially went through a designer who helped to make sure we have like a slope in the land, so it was kinda complicated, and we were able to find a way to do it so that she can have multiple steps, like from the car inside. At this moment, you know, she is mobile, but like the point is to have a place for her to be over years to come and have the support from her family. So it was designed for that purpose.
Well, I mentioned it partly because it seemed that you didn't really need to do a maximum. You didn't need the maximum floor space to meet your needs. But our, our regulation does provide some, an extra allowance for situations that involve medical accommodation. So there's a slight adjustment. It could've been a little bit larger, but anyway, it wasn't necessary. So, here we go. Maybe you could just kinda give us the highlights of what's here. Is there just one slide, or is there, are there a couple of slides, or just one?
Can we just put this one up?
Oh, okay.
I think we've got their application.
Okay, yeah.
Do we have the, what's on, do we have the?
Okay.
I'll just, I would go to the agenda.
So the main thing I would say is that we tried our best, having gone through the different other approval processes. There was requests to really try to reduce the size as much as possible so that we weren't asking for a spare room. So we did that the best we could and ended up reducing it some, and only kinda retained what was necessary for the basic sort of mobility, if there was a wheelchair, to be able to get around different parts of like the space.
Here, Mrs. Looney, I brought your, your slides up, so. So again, this was the original proposed addition.
Yeah.
I think you have a floor plan as well.
Yeah.
I think.
That's, that floor plan is the finished floor plan, right? Yeah.
Brittany, tell me where to go.
Yep. So those are the architecturals.
Wanna talk to these three?
Yeah, so you can see this represents sort of the side where it'll be built, like the side of our house, and so there's a separate entrance in case she, you know, sort of felt to have a sense of independence from the outside would be going down. They're gonna have to build it up a little bit in order to like allow for not too many stairs to kinda go into the unit. There'll be a small amount of space below kinda her unit, just because they'll have to create that as a way to have her space like aligned.
Yeah, so if you're looking from the front, the addition is, this is the profile of the, of the head-on addition from the front elevation.
Yeah.
And then here, you can kinda see as it goes down the side, there's a drop in elevation, so, you know, it kinda gets built and then goes back, and then we've got, kind of, both the rear and the, and the other side.
And the lower level is just space that you're adding? It's not part of the ADU? That's part of like your own, you're gaining that space as part of your residence, or less?
Correct. Sort of.
It's not a huge way.
Only doing the ADU amount right now.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, sort of essentially, it may not even be finished, it just has to be there in order to accommodate for us, yeah.
Okay.
We did put in, she was putting in what it could look like, and at this point, the main reason is the first one on the right hand side.
That's the first one. Yeah, so that's the foundation, that's the wall. Yeah. Gotcha, first one.
Other commissioners have questions? Comments?
I mean, I think that's been seen by the other boards, so they've approved it, and I'll probably be in your exact same shoes in a few years myself, so I understand the use case, for sure.
I have one quick question. I see on the, the fourth page, the one there, it looks like there, there's an existing retaining wall that the addition is going on top of. Is that, have you?
It may look like that, but there is not an existing retaining wall on that side. There might, I guess the very end of it, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, it looks like it continues through, like not entirely, but is there, is that change, like are you planning on, I'm blanking on the word to use here, but are you planning on?
Incorporating?
Yeah, incorporating something to offset that?
Yeah, I think my understanding is like the actual structure will end up sort of being in place of that, whether retaining wall is, like the structure will be there, and then probably if there's any need for the continuation, the wall will be like next to it. But, um, right now it's at that lower patio that's sort of, yeah, so if we look at the bottom right, that's the structure that will be newly put there, and right now there's like a, yeah, a retaining, and that's gonna pull that up. So I think that they're gonna have to accommodate for that, and.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
Structurally, I'm not sure, but we have had a contractor look at it, feels comfortable of how it's gonna work based on the design itself, and they now have the construction plan to, I guess, you know, look at that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you have presented everything that you wanted to get in front of us, we're ready to pull the call.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now.
You guys have a draft motion in your staff report. We did, we did lift the draft motion to the, to the screen.
Perfect. So, does anybody have further comments, questions, whatever? And if not, anyone who would like to can go ahead and make a motion, relying probably on the one that's on the screen right there, that was circulated to us earlier, but it's, was provided by staff in the staff report.
I'll do it.
Okay. Diane.
Okay. I move the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty-four dash eighteen of Curtis Looney and Manu Singh Looney applicant slash owner for site plan approval to permit a plus or minus ten thousand fifty-four square foot attached accessory dwelling unit at Ten Cedar Glen. Accessor's map E-ten, block one forty-seven, lot two zero seven, Simsbury, Connecticut, oh six oh seven oh, zone R forty. The commission finds that the application for site plan has met the standards set in section three point five, and the site plan criteria in section eleven, and is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction, and two, projects shall be developed in substantial conformance with the plans dated, titled, proposed addition Ten Cedar Glen by Clark Land Surveying LLC dated nine fifteen twenty twenty-three, revised four twenty-two twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
I think you said ten thousand, I think you meant, which one thousand fifty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry. One thousand fifty-four, sorry about that.
Plus or minus?
Yeah, plus or minus, right.
So we have a motion and a second to approve application twenty-four eighteen. Does anybody have any further comments or questions? Then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye, please. Aye. And those opposed, nay? Great, that passes unanimously. So folks, you're in business, that's all there is to this meeting. You're welcome to stay, but you're all set.
Well, he's our, he's our liaison from the selectmen, isn't he?
Oh.
You gotta stick around.
I'll watch on YouTube.
The next item of business is the, let me uncover it. It's application twenty-four sixteen relating to fifty-three Quarry Road, and the, the owner is Ricky Garson. Ricky, there you go.
Hi.
Well, let me just do this, the.
Mr. Chair, want me to offer just a little, little background?
Sure.
Before the applicant speaks?
Okay.
And then, so, so this is an application, it, it, we don't call it a site plan, we don't call it, it's a, it's a request of the zoning commission. And it's a request for approval to allow an outdoor play area at a current dog care business. The parcels are forty, so the use is a non-conforming use, so it's a legal non-conforming use. And it was, back in two thousand and eight, the zoning commission went through a process where an applicant at the time was asking for a, a, a dog daycare and a dog grooming business. And if you remember, under, under your zoning regs, the zoning commission can replace a non-conforming use with a like non-conforming use. So before that, it was a Montessori school, and you found that in two thousand and eight, when, when the applicant asked to, to make the change from this non-conforming to that non-conforming, said okay. But in two thousand and eight, the zoning commission added one condition to that application, and that applica, and that condition was that there would be no, Brittany, what's the language?
No outdoor dogs.
No outdoor, no, no kennel, no, no runs or anything like, so that was a condition. So the applicant has a dog, a daycare business, there's no kenneling there, but is requesting, essentially to remove that condition. And the, the way to do that, we think, is to come to you and ask in, at a public meeting. And then I would, so I would defer to the applicant to kinda explain why we're here.
Yeah, well, we've been there for six years now, and when I started, the grooming salon that was there, that we kind of like shifted over and took over, they, I would say, were using the outdoor area for like letting the dogs out to go to the bathroom. So I had just assumed that the dogs were allowed to be there, and the landlord never said that the dogs couldn't be outside. So I've just been using the outdoor area because dogs need to go outside to the bathroom, and I have the daycare, so it's, and, I mean, we keep it pretty tame, I would say, so, yeah. I didn't know until we came maybe four years later to expand it a little bit, and obviously it was shut down because we found out that we weren't allowed to even be using the outdoor area. Yeah, so now we're here, and would love to use the outdoor area, of course, so that the dogs can run around. Yeah.
So is the same owner still the landlord?
So the, the groomer that originally did the two thousand and eight approval, she is still there grooming, just a few doors, we kinda like renovated the building a little bit.
But she was a tenant, not the owner.
She is a tenant in there, yes. Yep, yeah, so there, they, they have been there, they left a little bit, another grooming.
My question is about the owner.
The owner of what? The building?
The building that you deal with.
Yeah, he's still the owner.
Isn't the same person who was there in a while?
Yes, he is still the owner.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yes. Have you ever gotten complaints or anything? Not a single one. Okay. Yes.
Is there any houses nearby?
So there's a house on the property, but it's also the landlord's house to rent, and we've never had a complaint from them. Across the street, you can see all this green, that green up there is like a huge hill, and there's a neighborhood community up there. I actually have clients on that road, and we've never had a complaint from them. And then across on Terry's Plain, there's also houses, but past the farm.
Right, so Vice Chair, that was taken out of our G I S, it just, that shows the property in light blue, and then an approximate measurement to the residential homes.
I guess that closest shows five hundred and thirty-six feet.
There's quite an elevation difference.
Yeah.
And it's elevation.
It doesn't properly show the trees and stuff, too, yeah.
Right, right.
It's nowhere, nowhere near them.
Yeah.
So those, are those houses closer than if you were to head towards, you know, south from, from your address, if you headed south towards Avon?
South towards Avon, those houses, they're probably similar, but elevation isn't involved. Like, so if you go towards Avon, I don't know when the first house hits.
Yeah, I thought your parents are there for a while.
Yeah.
So there's a few farms.
It took them in the middle of nowhere.
It's literally in the.
Oh, oh. Well, it's on, on the other side of the road, though. Yeah, newer farm, like factory or something.
It's ridiculous that.
A newer farm is.
I, I don't know why they even put that rule in, in the first place. I was, I was a, that was my daycare for me when I was a kid. Kids used to run around, they make a ton of noise. Why, why they put that condition in there in the first place is, I don't, I don't even know.
So we, so, the answer is, I don't know what the answer is. You know, we tried to, we tried to look a little bit into, you know, what happened in two thousand and eight, look at the minutes and do that kinda stuff, but, you know, my, my sense is, is that maybe at that time, there was concern that dogs might be kept overnight, and therefore, if they're kept overnight and they're outside, that could be a potential nuisance to the neighbors. You know, staff's, staff's feeling on this is, I mean, it's, it's, dogs aren't gonna be outside all day long, I mean, they may, but they're not, they're not gonna be kennelled there. It's not, it's not a kennel activity, so if they're in and out, they're in and out. And with the distance of, of, of joining houses, I just don't see why that condition would be necessary today. But that, that would be for you to decide.
Yeah, we definitely don't do that. We do not kennel dogs outside.
I've, I've been inside this place. They, they keep that place extremely clean. I was there when I saw the dogs outside, and they weren't even making that much noise. This is, and it's, it's nowhere near any of its neighbors, that it seems preposterous that that rule is there, but now I guess we know why, so.
Well, what was the condition for the dog business that's at the Akamore compound down there on the south end of town? The fellow was here just a couple of months ago.
Near the tennis club.
By the, yeah, this building is very close to the tennis facility.
So I think that, I don't, I think that may have been no overnight dog.
Yes, that's right.
Dog keeping.
This is the, at Simsmore Square?
They could go outside.
Simsmore Square, that, I think that, I think that condition was, was no overnight boarding.
So he could have dogs inside, outside, but not overnight? Okay.
Yeah, I think he had, he had both, he had like an indoor and then an outdoor space as well.
Well, I, it sounds to me like you have a very successful business there.
Thank you.
I think, you know, I sense there's support for continuing to do what you're doing, but.
There definitely is.
I have to tell you, sometimes when I drive by there, I think about the days when I was a kid, and my parents used to take me over there once in a while. There was a, the farm there was Pharaoh's Farm.
Yeah.
And they had an ice cream shop.
Yeah.
In that building.
Uh-huh.
So we used to go over there and have ice cream, and it was a great treat, and.
We, we found pennies in the yard and old milk cartons, and, yeah, it's crazy. I mean, obviously with, we added a bunch of things so that we didn't have to, the dogs wouldn't get to that, but.
Oh, well, but we have other ice cream shops to go to these days, so, okay. Does anybody have other questions or comments or concerns about this application?
I don't know. If there's any cap on the number of dogs you can have outdoors at any particular time, I didn't see that in the application.
So there's no, I mean, in our, and just my business personally, like with the size of the building, I've capped at a certain amount of dogs, 'cause obviously I don't wanna go too, too big. So we cap at sixty, but on a daily basis, we have maybe thirty to forty, and it's one to every fifteen, one person to every fifteen dogs. And that's the A S B C A and the kennel and boarding associations ratio. So we keep that very strict.
So what we're, we're doing is, well, we have a suggested text for a motion, so if somebody would like to move on to that and make a motion, we can, but I don't wanna rush this if there's other questions or concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyone else? I, I move that the zoning commission approve application ZC number twenty-four dash sixteen of Ricky Garson applicant-owner for the zoning commission approval to allow an outdoor dog play area at existing dog daycare business at fifty-three Quarry Road, Accessor's map J zero seven, block one two eight, lot zero zero two A one, zone R forty. The commission finds the removal of the two thousand and eight condition of approval is appropriate. The project shall be in substantial conformance to the submitted plans titled Existing Conditions Plan by Alfred Associates Incorporated dated four two 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 four.
Second, go.
I think Kate got that one.
We'll get Kate.
Okay, I put Kate down for a second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Then we'll go ahead with a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Well, it passes unanimously, so your request is approved, and good luck. I hope you have continued success.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I think it's at the back of the, oh, okay, so they post these every day, no, they post them every day. Here's my dog.
Okay, and Brittany, do you wanna kind of walk us through what your observations are and suggestions or recommendations are on the notice requirements change?
Right, so for you, you have a memorandum that staff put together regarding changing of the public noticing requirements. It's a text amendment change that we're proposing to the zoning regulations and the center code, just to, you know, improve the, the town public notice requirements. As, as I think we mentioned previously, there's some inconsistency in the types of applications and the types of notices, it gets a little confusing, so we wanted to make that consistent. So we are requesting a change for all public hearings, the, of requirement of a posting of a sign at the application property, as well as a notice to abutting properties within one hundred feet of the application. So those changes would require the following text changes to the zoning regulations, there would be an added section eighteen of public hearing notice requirements. This would be at the end of the zoning regulations, after the definitions section. There would have to be removal from the zoning board of appeals section, and then in the Simsbury center code, there would be modifications of two sections that reference the posting of signs for site plans. So those are outlined in the staff report. The next step would be, you know, obviously comments if needed, and to schedule a public hearing for, for the review and approval.
Does this impact the time that it, like the time required from like when you receive the application until when we would have our meeting, like to do the mailing, to abutting properties versus the amount of time that's required already and when you have newspapers and our.
No, no, we would work within the time that we already have.
So no, yeah, we, obviously, the, the base requirement under the state code is the newspaper, and that is twice within a fifteen-day period, one between ten and fifteen days, and the next between two and.
Two and five.
Two and ten.
Two and ten.
Two and ten days. So we would use that, so I, I think our plan would be say for the, actually, two points to make. One, for the sign, we were gonna ask the applicant to place the sign.
That's my question.
We're gonna ask the applicant to place the sign and submit an affidavit that it was placed, and I think we're gonna ask for two weeks, just like the mailing, so, within two weeks.
And are you gonna outline what's an acceptable placement for the sign, like a generally visible area?
So if we, if there's no language, we, we'd always say along the street frontage, or if there's multiple street frontages, multiple signs. So if we have any of that language, we will. And then two, for the mailing, we're gonna do one hundred feet, one hundred feet from the, from the subject property, and that will be something that staff would take care of. We would do that, we've got the mailing list, we're, and it would be regular mail, not certified mail, to the address in the, you know, the current database that we have by, from the accessor, the, the, the accessor's office from town, you know, our tax numbers. And I think that would be within probably fifteen days, and just to, so it's all consistent.
We just, I'm sorry, Kate, you was.
So if it's large properties, then it's like the abutting properties only, but if it was like smaller properties and several properties were within the hundred feet, then those, it could be like two.
Sometimes it's five, and sometimes it's twenty-five.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a dense location.
Yeah.
So again, we're trying to get to, you know, really, as Brittany, I think, wrote in her, in her, in her memorandum, we're trying to, one, we're trying to be more transparent, and we wanna let, let people know, so the sign kinda lets the community know, right? The, the sign on the property lets the community know, but the abutters lets the immediate property, you know, the folks that immediately are adjacent. We thought some places do one, some places do the other, thought it, it makes sense to do both, and that way we kind of fully inform the public of, of the application.
So.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So my question related to the notice you're giving to neighbors, it's going via regular mail? Then if it goes via regular mail, there's no proof of service. So how do you confirm that the neighbors have received the mailing if it doesn't go certified?
So because it's not a requirement, we're, you know, we're trying to cut cost a little bit, and this is gonna cost the taxpayer, the cost of certified mail would be, would be quite expensive for us, so we're just, I think it's, it's a best effort, we're gonna do our best to send it to the, the property owners that, that are listed to be adjacent property owners. And we'll get some back, I, I've done, you know, we've done this, we'll get some return service, we will.
But if, if, if it's first-class mail, their post office is obligated to return it if they didn't deliver it. So we know that they didn't get it, but it's not the same thing as an affirmative, they got it.
And I should say, we do get a lot of certified mail back. And I should say, we do get a lot of certified mail back as well, that was not, that was returned to center, and that's an eight dollar rate.
It just becomes an issue when the property owner says they never got it.
Yeah. And that, and that happens, and that happens.
Even if it's not returned, they can still say they never got it.
That's where the sign comes from.
So that's, so that's.
Right, so where the sign, yeah.
I, I think if we triple up on, on the notice, you know.
Right, okay, that's fine.
I was going to ask about the sign, but I see that we, you guys would provide it, so.
Yes, it's a standard sign that we have used, it simply says, pending land use application, contact, contact the town with the phone number.
Okay.
Wanted to add one other question on point two, notice by public hearing signs. If you go to the second bullet point, the last sentence, you say, the applicant shall make every effort to obtain an additional sign.
Right, so sometimes signs can get removed, or if there's a storm, they, it would, it would get taken away by the rain or wind.
And my question related to make every effort, why are we putting that in there? Why do we just say they are obligated to get?
We can be, we can be tougher with that sentence.
Yeah, I think we.
The applicant shall replace the sign when it becomes observed.
And are there.
And that's really the intent, Mr. Bass, that it is, that if it's, so if sign's down because of a storm, they need to commit another sign.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll make that part of the, that language.
But.
And then I guess my only question is, like, what level of oversight is there that you give them the sign, and then they don't put up the sign? Like, is somebody going to drive around and make sure the sign is there, or?
So we're going to ask them to fill out an affidavit, which is a legal document that presented at a prior public hearing to, 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 to you.
And if they don't do the sign, and they sign the affidavit, but they don't do the sign?
They have to know.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I don't want you guys, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want you guys to have to drive around town, making sure people put up the sign, but at the same time, you know, people can say anything.
And, you know, maybe, you know, we're kind of modern now, I don't think there's any reason applicant can't take a picture of the sign as part of the affidavit. Maybe we can figure out a way to have that as part of the requirement.
Yeah, okay.
That would be a, a good enhancement.
Yeah.
What, what I was concerned about was that, I don't see, in, in looking at the practices in other towns, electronic means doesn't seem to be a prominent way of communicating, except for the newspaper, we might say is electronic. But I was wondering about, like, I'm not sure how much value it is, but it comes to my mind, putting something on the town website, that, you know, it's easy to do.
Right, we're not required to, but we always put our, on our.
We already place our legal notices on the town website for public hearings.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Good. Maybe we should put it in our regulations so that people know it, because they don't all look at the, at the town website, you know, okay.
It's good, I mean, you guys are covering the bases.
We're in the modern age with the use of the town website, okay.
So, so.
The other, the other thing I wanted to mention was that I'm interested in a mechanism, we don't need to work it out now, but a mechanism to, to keep people who haven't complied with their part from getting in front of the commission with a hearing. So as sorry as we might be, if they show up down here for a hearing and they haven't done their part, no exceptions. That would be my feeling. Now, I, no is with a small n, no exceptions, but I, you know, I don't know what kind of heartbreaking circumstance might arise, but.
A couple of things can happen, right? Particularly where it would be an applicant's responsibility, we are talking about the sign. Certainly, you've been involved where staff has made a mailing mistake, you know, in the last, certainly in the, since I've been here, we've made one or two.
Really?
Where we screwed up the mailing, and we had to cancel the meeting and have a new meeting. We certainly have done that, where we either forgot or didn't, whatever, did something wrong, or, you know, we did one where we said the meeting was at the library, and it was at, at town hall or something, and we screwed the agenda improperly. So in this case, an applicant would come and, and you would expect, staff would say, or you might say, you have the affidavit for your sign, and if they go like this, and you're like, well, we can't do the public hearing tonight, we'll have to come back and, when, when we've, when we've advertised properly. So staff will, will be sure to monitor that.
Okay.
We'll know if an applicant has an affidavit or not.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because we'll be saying, make sure you do your affidavit, make sure you get the sign, I mean, that's, you know, a part of the managing or handling process.
Then the idea is between now and before the public hearing, you would further tweak the suggested.
So that's the question, if you want to, if you want to see a, I mean, you, you could, you could let us, you could set the, the public hearing for September fifth, or whatever date that is, if you wanted to. Or we could come back with revisions to this draft and then have it in October. But I, I mean, I, I think, I think you can set the date, and if the language isn't perfect, we, we'll work on it, but you can have the public hearing, you're going to get home again, but
Right.
we may hear something from citizens who, 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 who might affect a, a change to the document. So I would suggest, set, set the date, and, you know, we will, we'll, we'll do the draft language, and that language can change based on your, your, your will.
Yeah. Thoughts of other commissioners on this thing of whether, the, the point is that we're only going to put in front of the public a draft document.
Yeah, yes.
And.
So it's a draft.
Right, until we vote, it's a draft. But rather than hold up the process till we get a look at the draft before it gets mailed, I think we've, we've got a pretty good idea of what it's going to say, and we should move forward. And if it, if you can, if it would benefit from further adjustment, I'd say, you know, go right ahead. And if we, you know, feel it could be better or different, we can bring that up September fifth, but, you know, the, the gist of what we want is here, and we have, it's the staff recommendation, so I'm in favor of moving ahead. But I'd like to hear if anybody.
I was just going to suggest that with the, with the posting of the sign, that there be some sort of timing associated with that too. It's like, it wouldn't, like, it's not really good enough for someone to take a picture of a sign on their property, like, the day that they come, is that in here? I was reading through, I saw fifteen days for the, for the newspaper piece, but does it say for the sign? Oh, maybe it did. It, it was like so separated, but, okay, all right, perfect.
At least, you said language, at least fifteen days.
So you would be receiving, like, some sort of affidavit that that occurred prior to them coming forward to us? Because you would be receiving that like fifteen days when they posted it, right?
You know, typically, the affidavit says it's been placed fifteen days and has been, if it has been maintained for the period. So we really wouldn't get it to the, the public hearing.
Okay, but we can, we can have them send a picture when it's posted, that, that can be.
You know, ninety-nine percent of the time, this isn't going to be a problem, the person's going to go in there and plant up on a tree and be done with it, right, you know?
We're going to, we're, we're going to not on a tree, but.
It'd be like a lawn sign.
Oh, wait, like a lawn sign?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll give them a lawn sign.
And then do they return that afterwards, so that we're not like causing recycling and other kinds of waste issues, or?
So, so, so two things, right now, they're, they're kind of cardboardy, and I, I think if we can make a commitment, this commission ultimately approves the, the sign requirement. I think we'll go back to the drawing board and, and develop a sign that can handle the weather a little bit better, and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll design something that works.
So ideally, they could hand them in, and you could reuse them.
Yeah, then we would reuse them, yeah.
Because that would be less costly.
A more hardy plastic is probably going to end up being the better.
Okay.
Just to, to go back to a point made earlier, when we were talking about where does the sign go, that goes on the road? Well, which road if they're on, if the, if the property abuts multiple public roads? And I guess, I just want to make sure everybody heard that and feels that that's what we should be doing. I mean, some might present that as more work, but I, I'll always remember our friend on Nod Road who had a property that abutted at least three roads, Climax, Nod Road, and I think Pine Crest or something like that is the street behind it. But he only put the sign on Nod Road because that was his address. And then we had other neighbors, very unhappy, on those other streets who didn't know what was going on with the property improvement that was being requested. They had no idea, and they were not happy. But that, that solves that if there's going to be a sign on each road, if there's multiple roads involved.
We'll make sure that the language says where there are multiple frontages, a sign per frontage is required.
Well, I.
Or something, something like that.
I mean, the alternative is to put it on the street where the, the tax assessor's using as the address to mail, you know, or the address that they put on the application, but.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to get that happen.
Yeah, I think the abut is also being notified by mail, so.
Well, the abutters are, the other people in the larger community are not, yeah, but, okay. So would somebody like to make a motion that we go forward on September fifth?
Four, four.
September fourth.
Right, Wednesday, September fourth, is, is your regularly scheduled first meeting, yeah, because we can't meet on Labor Day.
For a public hearing on.
September fourth.
Hearing on revisions or text amendment to our.
Text amendment to, to include notice requirements. To improve, to add, implement.
We don't need, we don't need separate motions. This is also, in addition to the, the thing called Simsbury zoning regulations, did this also affect the town center code?
Yeah, it is, it will.
So when we talk about what's involved here, we need to identify both.
When we write, when we write draft ad, it includes all.
Okay. Should we have a vote for the record? Well, we, we are identifying a public hearing, yeah.
Schedule a public hearing for September fourth on this, this matter.
Anybody have any comments on that? No, okay. Then by consensus, we'll go forward with that date and, and adopt that direction.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take a quick moment to commend town staff on bringing this before us. It's going to be a lot of work to continue to modernize the zoning code, and they've taken the first step and given us some information that we can really use, and some actionable stuff here, so it's going to be eating an elephant, trying to fix all the zoning codes, but, you know, one bite at a time, so, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay. That is the conclusion of our agenda for tonight. Does anybody else, anybody have anything further they want to bring up?
I did want to ask George Mupier out a question about progress on Wagner Ford site. I've had a lot of people ask.
I don't have an update.
You don't have an update?
I don't have an update on that property.
Interesting.
I did see a couple.
I have reached out to the developer, within the past two weeks, and I'm waiting for a, a response. Usually, we, we talk a little bit, but I'll let you know. I, I think they were looking for some funding related to the, the soil remediation, and I have not had an update on kind of finalization of the tenant, uh, um, the tenant list or the, the final leases, but I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else anybody wanted to bring up tonight while we're all here? Okay, well, how about if we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
Tony and then Diane, we'll vote to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-two.
I think at seven forty-four, Mr. Bass.
Oh. It's not eight, it's seven. It didn't really feel like too obvious, but it moved very speedily. Okay, so to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-four.